Where's?
I'm missing somebody?
Nope.
Because it's green.
It doesn't click.
Good evening, everyone. I call to order the city council workshop for Monday, July 27th, 5 o'clock PM. Tonight, we're going to have a 90-minute workshop on the 2021 preliminary budget workshop, fees and charges, CARES Act funds, trail fund, pedestrian crossings, and cost savings and efficiencies, followed by a reading of War and Peace, and then, oh, no, maybe that doesn't go. Dana, anything, or does this start with Trish?
Nothing for me. You can just have it go right over to Trish.
Trish, take it away. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So, tonight, we're taking a second look. The Mayor explained those topics for discussion this evening. So, on our calendar, the next meeting workshop will be August 24th, where we will ask for the direction on the preparation of the max tax levy, which will be adopted at the September 14th meeting. In November, we'll be looking at the enterprise funds and looking for direction on that proposed final budget and CIP in November as well. December 14th, we will ask the Council to adopt the tax levies and budget. At our last workshop, we were a little bit shorter of time, so we kind of had pushed this one off to this month. And the culture of continuous improvement includes the shared services that we have with the school district, with the recreation center, ice arena, Minnehaha watershed district, with the posthumum park. We have a street sweeper purchase with two cities and a shared GIS analyst position with four cities. All of those partnerships create a savings for the city. And more recently, the conversion of the city's streetlights to LED bulbs is about a $3,000 annual savings. There was a Met Council water efficiency grant that was awarded for $12,300, which we've gotten a really good response from residents on applying for those rebates that go against their water bills. So, that's going really well. And then, also, last time, we talked about the restructuring and staffing changes. That saves the city about $24,000. The fire department also has worked hard in coming up with ways to save with the purchase of the new fire truck mini pumper, replaces two vehicles. And also, the prepayment of that last year gives the city a savings of about $15,000, which is going to be used to purchase the equipment for that truck. More recently, Council had passed the purchase of the demo extrication tools, sorry, for $13,000, and saves the city about $32,000 over the next five years. So, let's get into the fees and charges for services. So, the revenue changes provide offsets and additional budget pressures. Fees and charges are reviewed by staff during the budget process. And one of the pieces this year, of course, is the COVID-19, and we're not, we're not quite sure what that full impact's going to be. Some categories that we expect to be flat or reduced would be in the billing permits, permits and licenses, and then the developer fees for new parks. The criteria that we use when determining fees, we look at the market comparisons. So, tonight, I'll be showing you several charts with our fees compared to our market cities. Some of the fees are set by external sources, such as the building code and building permit fees. And most often, you'll see in our charts that we are using the cost recovery method. And utility fees, we reviewed at the last workshop in May, which we had based off of the financial plan and rate study that was done. So, we won't be talking about the utility fees specifically tonight. Sources of revenue, as you can see, 80% of our revenue is through property taxes. So, charges for services are just a small piece. Making changes to those fees don't have a significant impact on the levy. It's just too, too small of a piece of that pie. All other sources on there for 2% would be like any government aid or grants that the city would happen to get. So, we're going to start out with building and development fees. This chart you might recognize from our website or my sidewalk platform. Building and development revenues are a big part of a growing community like Victoria. And today, we're just going to look at the development and building permit fees. And the water and sewer connection fees, we're going to look at a little more in detail when we do our enterprise budget funds in November. There is not a park fee listed. The city removed the park improvement fee from permits in 2016. So, the only money that is collected is through a developer if they do not provide parkland to the city. So, there's no set per-permit fee for parkland dedication. It would be your building, planning, review inspections, and then your development review would be the main piece of those fees. Planning and zoning fees include variances, CUPs, preliminary plaits, final plaits, rezoning. As you can see here, comparing to our market cities, we are not the highest or the lowest. We are in the, in the median, except for Lake Elmo, which seems to just be a lot higher than everybody. But these fees are set based on cost recovery method. Building permit and plan check fees. Building fees are based on a valuation of a home, and that valuation's determined by the ICC, and that's sent to the city annually. And then they take that valuation, and then we have our fee schedule, which is set by ordinance through the city. Victoria's fee scale has not been adjusted more than 15 years. It's based off of the 1997 UBC fee scale plus 10%. So, that's how they come up with that building fee. It's the valuation that is set by the ICC and then that fee schedule.
Can you tell us what ICC is?
It's the International Code Council and then United Building?
Building Code.
Code, yeah. And then, our plan check fees are based off of 65% of the permit fee. So, basically, that's also a valuation, since it's based off of the, the building permit. A new home typically requires between 15 and 18 inspections. They can go back several times more than that. Sometimes it's less. Really depends on, on the home. They're not all the same. And then, as you can see, this permit example in the slide here, there's several that I marked as pass-through fees. So, those are ones that go back to the state or the Met Council. So, like the sewer connection charge that Met Council gets, we charge on our building permit. And then, there's our sewer and water connection fees, which we'll be looking at, like I said, in more detail in November, but those are just over $4,000 of the permit. So, this leaves about $5,500 for building permit fees, and 5,100 of those are based on valuation. So, there's very little fixed fees set in this permit.
Is this market valuation?
Yes. Well, it's based off of the ICC, so it goes by square footage.
So, there's a chart somewhere that says that if your house is 3,000 square feet, it's got to be worth X.
So, from what I learned from our building officials, Scott McCarty, is that if all cities are going by the ICC per-square-foot fee, everybody should have, every city should have the same amount charged on that permit. However, some cities might say the builder said it's worth $200,000 more, and they'll base their fees off of that. Victoria does not. Victoria follows the ICC recommended charge per-square-foot. So, so it's really whatever they are setting it at and the square footage of the home.
Trish, on these pass-through fees, do we have any influence over those fees? Are that they just, they tell us what to charge, we charge it, and we pass it back to them?
Exactly. Yep. It's all with the state and the Met Council. In the past three years, the average new home permit with a plan check fee was $4,453. So, that's those two valuation items at the top.
So, does that include the total of the 15 to 18 inspections?
Yes. Yep. That's all included. And that includes like the plumbing, mechanical inspections, you know, all of it. Here is a summary of other permits, like the re-side, re-window, plumbing, mechanical. This is, the fees that we would charge as a flat fee in comparison to our market cities. So, we're kind of about right in the middle of the road there. The ones that aren't listed are like the deck and basement finishes. Most cities are using a valuation, but last year, Victoria changed to a flat fee. So, a deck permit is $225, and a basement is $350. And the reason that was done was our building official felt that it was better to have a flat fee so that we could still use that cost recovery method, because some decks and basement finishes are getting to be so expensive that that valuation was really driving the price of the permit up. And he felt that it, it was better with the cost recovery method that we use, that we use a flat fee. So, that was changed last year. Both Chanhassen and Waconia base everything off of valuation, so they're not listed on here. So, why are homes more expensive in Victoria compared to Carver or Waconia? Victoria has the highest median home value in the county. So, the city could reduce fees, and the homes would still be valued at the same amount. Victoria is a great community, and people really want to live here. So, if you see, you know, over Chanhassen even, which is our next closest, there's still quite a gap in median home values. So, you know, when a builder goes to sell the same house here as they may be built in Waconia, they can charge more because it's in Victoria. It has nothing to do with what we're charging for fees to, for them to build that home. It's just because the market's so good here.
Trish, how much of the gap in median home value is due to the fact that we have a higher proportion of new homes? So, most of our additional homes are brand-new and therefore higher, whereas these other communities are older, and there's a lower mix of new houses.
And, and you know?
There's a distortion here.
And that, that could, you know, that could drive that price up. However, you know, even some of these growing cities like Carver, you know, has a lot of newer homes, and they're still quite a bit lower. But, you know, that's going to even out over time as well. And it's all going, you know, as, as cities develop or, you know, our city ages, yeah, you might see that flatten out where Victoria isn't as high as in comparison to others. But currently, it is. And it's not what we're basing our fees off of.
Right.
So, it's just what houses are selling for here. Do you have any other questions about our billing fees before we move on? Because I know that's kind of a lot of information. Okay, then we're going to look at administrative services fees. This example shows like for garbage haulers, like information requests, NSF fees, hawker peddler license, solicitors. So, again, Victoria's really kind of right in the middle of the pack there. The one thing that we would recommend is looking at having a solicitor permit, because we currently do not. And we would, we would propose charging $50 per business and $50 per person. The market range is $50 to $200. So, we would be starting out at the lower end. Some of the more expensive ones do full police background checks and badges. Our current system just requires large groups to provide information on their background checks, and also their COVID plans this year is new. Cindy, our city clerk, does all the research for each business and individual applicant. And the purpose of the fee would be for cost recovery.
Trish, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
And Cindy, can I put you on the spot? Do you know approximately how many solicitor permits we have to date?
I think we have like 80-something. But last year, it was really down, so I don't know. But in the year before, yeah. So, it varies year to year, but it's enough work that it's fair to charge them.
Thank you.
What's the difference between solicitor and this hawker peddler? What's the difference?
So, the hawker peddler, the peddler is like if you, well, in the day when they used to go around selling encyclopedias, and they'd have them with them and sell them right there, and they'd have to come. The hawker is like the ice cream princess, where she would usually come and have the ice cream and sell there, too. So, that has to get Council approval for the hawker and peddlers.
Like a food truck?
Like a food, well, food trucks is different.
That's another one?
It's a, it's, if they're on private property, we don't regulate them. I don't know that we've, we don't have the proper.
So, like a nice truck running up and down the street in the neighborhoods?
Correct. They have to come to the Council to get approval for that. Nobody's come this year. A couple of years ago, there were one person that is like a college student that was trying to raise money, it seems like. And, but they haven't been here for that, so that's the difference. And the solicitor is just going out and trying to schedule a future meeting.
Like the pest control people?
And home repair, there's a lot of remodeling, so they go around to do that.
Can I ask you a question about the garbage hauler, please? Belt plane and mound are way up there, probably like Carver.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
When I looked at, when I went through and actually took those fees and put them on ours, it's, ours is higher.
Okay.
Because the way it's laid out, it looks like there's more expensive, but when, because it's per-truck and different things like that. So, we get, get more income from it the way ours is versus using those.
So, I went by one, a garbage hauler license plus one truck just for a base. And so, some cities maybe have a higher base and then less per-truck, where we maybe have a lower base and more per-truck. So, that's why with us, with one truck, it looks lower, and maybe mound has a higher base fee. Does that make sense?
How would this work if you go to waste management? How do they, how do they pay this?
They pay it the $100 and then $75 per truck.
Per truck, that, per truck what? That enters per week?
That they have within the city, they list out their numbers. They have like 13 or 15 or 19 trucks.
So, they have 19 trucks coming every week or something like that, every two weeks?
Every time they pick up. Yep. Most of them are weekly pickup for garbage. I don't know, recycling is maybe every other week.
Every other, for recycling.
So, it's whatever truck they use, and they list out, then they have to pay the $75 per truck.
But that's per year or is that per week?
Per year.
So, is there a way to determine, and maybe this is the best way we have to do this. So, if waste management is doing business in Victoria and waste management is doing business in Carver with the same amount of trucks, is there a way to find out how that would compare? So, if we're charging them $100 plus, let's just say their fee is $1,000 a year, based on that, they're running the same amount of trucks in Carver, and Carver's charging $500 a year. Is there a way to find, you know what I'm saying?
So, Councilmember Black, members of the staff, if I just jump in, I think this chart shows exactly that, but the assumption is one truck.
Okay.
So, the bases vary, and then the per-truck costs vary. And so, the assumption that we used for this exercise was base plus truck and plug, plug that in.
But when I did it, I did it for our current, what we have right now, on each of those fees, and it came out that we paid more. I mean, we collect more. We pay more in Victoria from what I gather, because we have different amounts of trucks.
Because of how many trucks we have.
Yeah.
So, all of these assumptions are the base fee, whatever that is, variable, plus the one truck fee.
Yeah.
So, what costs are we trying to recover here?
Mostly would be road.
This ain't going to do it.
No, it's not going to do it. But you all, they have to, we need to supply the service, or we don't supply the service, but the service is needed.
So, nobody's paying for the road damage, because it's probably not in the, in the fees that the homeowners are paying, because they pay low fees. So, something.
How many different haulers do we have?
Five.
Five?
Yes, I got five.
Do we cap that? We don't have any limits on that?
Okay. I'd like to.
Not currently, but people would like to.
We can talk about that later.
If, if somebody's going to do an audit of our fees, this is an example where we're undercharging, because the damage to roads caused by all these garbage trucks is a lot more than a couple thousand bucks a year.
Okay, liquor license fees. So, this chart shows liquor license fees in comparison to our market cities. I didn't include on-sale licenses, because a lot of the cities are charging, charging according to square footage of the business. So, it's really hard to make a good comparison. But just for your information, an on-sale license in Victoria is $3,300. Other cities ranged in fees from $200 to $13,000, depending on the square footage of the business. So, staff's not recommending a change to the licenses, especially with the COVID and the uncertainty of restaurants and bars.
Yes, I agree.
And then, we'll look at park shelters and the pavilion fee. It's kind of hard, because every city has different types of shelters, and, you know, not very many have the pavilion type rentals. So, kind of did the best I could to find ones that had both like non-resident and resident charges to show kind of how cities are billing back that way. Some cities just bill the one amount, no matter if it's resident or non. And again, we're in the, the median to, you know, maybe lower end on some of them, but still kind of in that middle, middle of the pack. Park programs like T-ball, playground, and yoga. Again, those, those can vary from city to city, but I think we're pretty, pretty well in line with our fees. And recreation memberships, too. You know, everyone has different amenities, so they can kind of charge all over the board. But I think that, again, we are right in the middle of the pack with those as well. So, here is a list of all of our fees for services. So, when doing the budget, we usually take like the five-year average. And this is showing that five-year average. This is also showing the 2020 budget, and then what we're proposing for the preliminary 2021 budget. Everything except for the new home permits and plan reviews are based off of that average. And those new home permits and plan review fees are based off of 111 new homes. So, that five-year average is going to be a lot higher, because we have done more homes in the last few years. But we're still planning to budget on 111 new homes.
Other cities ranged in fees from two hundred dollars to thirteen thousand dollars, depending on the square footage of the business. So staff's not recommending a change to the licenses, especially with the COVID and the uncertainty of restaurants and bars.
Yes, I agree.
And then we'll look at park shelters and the pavilion fee. It's kind of hard because every city has different types of shelters and, you know, not very many have the pavilion type rentals. So kind of did the best I could to find ones that had both like non-resident and resident charges to show kind of how cities are billing back that way. Some cities just bill the one amount, no matter if it's resident or non. And again, we're in the, the median to, you know, maybe lower end on some of them, but still kind of in that middle, middle of the pack. Park programs like T-ball, playground and yoga. Again, those, those can vary from city to city, but I think we're pretty, pretty well in line with our fees. And recreation memberships too. You know, everyone has different amenities, so they can kind of charge all over the board. But I think that, again, we are right in the middle of the pack with those as well. So here is a list of all of our fees for services. So when doing the budget, we usually take like the five-year average. And this is showing that five-year average. This is also showing the 2020 budget. And then what we're proposing for the preliminary 2021 budget. Everything except for the new home permits and plan reviews are based off of that average. And those new home permits and plan review fees are based off of one hundred and eleven new homes. So that five-year average is gonna be a lot higher because we have done more homes in the last few years. But we're still planning to budget on one hundred and eleven new homes.
Do we know what our five-year average on homes is?
It's one hundred and twenty.
Yeah, it's twenty.
In the last few years.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if we shouldn't get that closer to where we actually are.
Personally, I think we should keep it low because it's better to have extra debt to be sure.
Mayor, members of the council, council member black, to your, to your comment. We did look at this and I think Trish and I went into the budget pre-COVID thinking that we were gonna make a recommendation to do just that, increase that revenue to, or increase the projection of projected revenue to that, be equal to the one hundred and twenty home permits, which reflects that five-year average. Then COVID came along and there was a lot of economic uncertainty. We started to see some slowdown, although I'd say it's steady now. But we saw a little bit of dip in some of our developers just stepping back from development for a moment to kind of catch their breath, assess the situation, assess the economy and decide how to move forward. So we feel like that's starting to gain some momentum a little bit. But we do not propose the change for this year because if, depending on what happens with COVID, if there is a economic slowdown and building does come to a halt, we've created a, quite a big revenue hole for us that the only way we feel like we could patch it would be to reduce services or tap into some of our fund balance, revenue stabilization, which could be an option. But then balancing that with what we just went through on our triple A bond rating, we, if we have, if we start tapping into those funds, we put our bond rating at risk, that status, that triple A status. So it's really a fine, fine line that we're walking. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer, but I just wanted you to know what the staff discussion and kind of position was coming into this budget. And certainly we've got a long way to go with the budget year and things. We might have some more insights as the year goes on on how COVID's gonna impact our community and the economy. But that was why we stuck with the one hundred and eleven. Otherwise, this year we would, if COVID hadn't happened, we feel pretty confident saying that we would have increased that up to one hundred and twenty.
What's the revenue that would be generated by an additional ten homes? Like what would be the difference in that?
It's about forty-three thousand dollars.
Forty-three thousand, okay, thanks.
This isn't, this is not everything. This is just related to homes.
On this list.
So the, the fees for services list?
Yeah, everything you reviewed, it's not on here, right?
So the, it, it's the, yeah, it's pretty much everything. I might have like combined some of the items into one line, but it, it does, I mean, it doesn't have, obviously, like your taxes and revenues, you know, franchise fees, those type of things, because it's just fees for services.
Where are the waste haulers?
That would be under licenses and permits. So we don't have those in like their own special category. We put like all those types of permits together into one line item to reduce the number of account numbers we would need. But yeah, this would be everything that's like not tax-related. I mean, interest on investments too is kind of up in the air on where that's gonna go. You know, it's hard to budget for that. And then I guess according to chief Hager, the fire department grants and aids, he anticipates to be lower for 2021 as well, so.
Cindy, you had something?
Yeah, I might have spoken, said that the garbage hauling was for the roads, but I, I guess it's probably more administrative what the, because when I talked to Dave about it, it's, you can't get enough for garbage service to offset the roads. So it's not just the roads for the income generating for that.
Sorry, the administrator.
Yeah, and, yeah, they don't have a lot of, the police don't have a lot of calls for that. And the only thing really that it affects is the roads, so that's why I said roads, but.
Right.
It's not to be able to actually do the damage.
It's a problem though.
Okay, are there any other questions about fees and services before we move on to the next section?
Nope, I can roll.
Okay, the CARES Act funding is our next topic. So what is the CARES Fund? It's designed to provide economic assistance to local governments due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The city is eligible to spend up to seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Eligible expenses need to satisfy three elements. The expenditure was incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Costs were not accounted for in the city's most recent budget. And the performance or delivery of the expense must occur during the period of March first through November fifteenth. What expenses are we considering right now? Payroll expenditures for the fire department duty crew and payroll for our chief, fire chief. Unemployment benefit expenses for furloughed employees. Computer equipment and IT services for staff to work remotely. Safety supplies, cleaning supplies, PPE. And also physical facility changes so the city can adhere to safety guidelines. What doesn't qualify? You cannot replace lost revenues. And you cannot use it for capital projects such as streets, sidewalks or parks. Staffs continuing to educate themselves as the guidelines are changing often and the use of funds and reporting requirements are also changing. This is a list of some of the COVID-19 expenses that we've compiled just through this last week. Some of the most largest items would be the fire department eligible payroll, IT expenses. And then there's quite a bit of PPE, productive gowns, cleaning supplies, face masks, those types of expenditures.
Can you give an example of the fire department and those payroll costs? What, what that actually is? And other than that, because.
Mayor, members of the council. So when we all went into quarantine through the governor's executive order, we were still responding to fire calls, calls for service. They may not have been COVID-related, just your general calls for service. So under our paid-on-call model, you get a call for service, that page goes out to everybody in the department. We were getting twenty, thirty people coming to the fire station to respond to a call. So social distancing is hard to maintain when you have that many people. And we, we love our firefighters for, for their dedication to their service, to their community. But safety was something that we needed to balance. And so we, for a period of time, decided that we were gonna create a daily duty crew. So we had four to five people on at all times, whether we had a call or not, to limit the number of people that were responding to the station.
And that's what this cost?
And that's what that cost is. And then for the fire chief, yes, we did budget for a fire chief in our budget this year, but we've also been tracking his time. He has not only been attending on our behalf to all the EOC, so the emergency operations center meetings. He's, he's been our liaison for that. He was also appointed by the fire chiefs group to be the fire chief or the fire liaison for the entire county on the EOC. And so we've been tracking that time and will be asking for reimbursement specific for his time related to those two duties.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is just a, there are still other COVID-19 expenditures that haven't been incurred. So staff is looking for recommendations on ways to utilize the remaining CARES funds for city expenditures. There's a few items, the IT equipment, staff would recommend accelerating replacement of PCs and workstations with laptops. Utilizing the CARES funds for this purpose meets the eligibility criteria for the use of the funds and reduces our levy for future years. For system improvements, one example would be using CARES funds to leverage our laser fish system as a business process automation tool. We're working with our vendor on developing a three-year plan for a phased rollout of process automation. We'd propose utilizing CARES funds to accelerate the projects. That would result in allowing staff to work remotely fully and that our public-facing, meaning residents, don't have to come to city hall to conduct, conduct business and they could do this online. The final recommendation is where staff anticipates most of the remaining funds to be spent. These types of expenditures are in line with how other cities are, are using CARES funds also. We feel that items that we're proposing to move forward with not only help us achieve our mid and long-term plans for space needs, but they're also entirely focused on implementing safety measures for staff and the public. For example, these changes will accommodate social distancing, eliminate shared workstations, creating safety barriers. Because of the timelines for expending these funds, we're looking for direction from council tonight so we can be, and working on them. All of those items would need to be taken care of by the November fifteenth deadline. So do you have any?
How do these changes tie into our space utilization study that we've got going on?
Mayor, members of the council, next week we have a meeting because of the primary election that's occurring. So we, our meeting date will be actually next week, Monday on the third. And we will have our space needs consultant here to present that information. So it'll tie in all together nicely for you. But we do have, we've placed things in short-term needs. So within five years, what we anticipate we'll need in terms of space in all of our city facilities, long-term, so ten years and, or midterm, ten years, and then long-term, twenty-plus years. And so some of these examples that Trish just pointed to help us either incrementally start making a leap towards those midterm, long-term goals. And it would have been, now granted, it might be designed a little bit differently, but ultimately would help us either fully achieve that goal or make that incremental step towards and at the same time allow us to spend the CARES funds. So we've got a funding source without increasing our levy to be able to achieve those space, future space needs.
So we haven't seen that. So what I'm hearing you tell me is that these suggestions you want us to consider and provide input on tonight are in line with what you expect us to see next week?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that's correct. So if you said, no, we absolutely don't think that CARES funding, CARES Act funding should be spent on facility changes, we would still present to you next week the long-term, midterm, short-term space needs analysis. But we would not be giving direction to our consultant to be working separately at an accelerated pace on some of these other things that would be eligible for reimbursement through the CARES Act fund. So we're just looking for general guidance from you tonight. Do you think this is a good use of expending those funds? Or are there other things out there, floating out there? We've kind of, as a staff, we've been going to a lot of informational webinars, webinars, meetings, peer groups, the league, all sorts of different resources where everybody's trying to figure out the funding criteria, the reporting, how you could use it, how you shouldn't be using it, what's eligible, what's not. And we feel like we've gone through and ticked through a lot of things where there's just, you're so limited to what you can use these funds for.
So at this point, are you and the staff confident that we can use those, the CARES fund for these types of activities?
So mayor, members of the council, what we would say is the guidance is very fuzzy. That being said, based on what we have in front of us today, we feel confident that our interpretation aligns with a lot of the other cities' interpretation of today's guidelines that have been given to us to, by the, the federal government, that these types of expenditures would meet the criteria. Now, there's a whole mess of different reporting requirements that we're going through. So there's, documentation is gonna be key in this. There are five different buckets or five different categories in the CARES Act funds that eligible funds have to fall into those categories. So payroll, equipment, subsidies, the other one, it was escaping me.
Safety.
Safety. And so we would take each expenditure and document which category it fell in. And then we'd essentially write our narrative, why we feel that this was directly related to COVID. So for example, if you take a change in the council chambers to the dais, so, you know, to expand the dais, so you're socially distanced right now, the five of you. We also have planning commission that meets in here, our parks and rec commission that meets in here, and lakes and water quality committee that meets in here. And so they're much larger. They have up to nine members, ten members. And so it's very difficult to social distance and still have everybody at the dais. So if you're making those changes, that social distancing creates those safety barriers, which is an eligible cost, not in our budget. So that's, that's just one example of how that would work. And then that would fall into the safety. It would also arguably fall into the equipment.
Yep, thank you, council.
Right, I wouldn't have any objections to any of these. I think Dana's example of the dais is a good one. Another one that might need a little more explaining to the public, we, we've talked about this at our one-on-one meeting, but expanding the council chambers, possibly opening up the, the old break room there and then also updating the HVAC to include, include more air exchange. So just a little touch base on those, but personally, I have no objections to the staff to, to look into these further.
Thank you, council, anyone else?
Yeah, mayor.
Go ahead.
Do we have, do we, will we be able to get assurance upfront that will be reimbursed for these expenditures? We just have to, that we do get great documentation, so.
Council member McMillan. So the league has advised us that we should take our lists to our auditors and our legal department for, for them to review. That's what they're recommending all cities do, so.
Great, thank you.
And those expenses for legal review would also be covered under COVID.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
And I, I agree as well because having, having a business of my own, I had to do a pandemic preparedness plan and I had to put out all the steps and exactly what I had to do. And I did buy air purifiers for the salon to help with the air quality because there is concern about it filtering through. And if someone does have COVID and it filters through your system, you just give it to everybody. So I think, I think we need to do that. Plus, I, I noticed some of the expenses that you had on the previous page for PPE and cleaning supplies. I'd stack up on that stuff, big time. And use the, use that CARES money for that.
Thank you, Mr. Bolt.
My advice is do not be shy about this, go for it. You're on the side of taking a little bit of risk, because this is, this is an opportunity to catch up on this. The air quality HVAC thing is big. Anybody who's been in this room since this building has been built knows there's a big problem here, and you should go for complete resolution of that problem. And no, not be shy about it. Everything is good. Your administrative costs, we should make full recovery of all the administrative costs, because they're going to be huge.
Okay, I have no objection, so let's, I think that's unanimous, and counsel says, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make one comment, mayor, council, if I could. Just on the PPE supplies, we anticipate that as this pandemic continues, we'll continue to need to purchase those supplies. It's a little bit skewed on what you're seeing right now, because we had so many generous donations made to us by businesses locally and then throughout the state to help us get through, because there was a shortage. And so we had hand sanitizer, face shields, and other protective and safety equipment donated to us. We don't anticipate that there'll be a revolving door of donations in the future, although we'd be happy to work with anybody, any individual or business that wants to donate to us for those things, we're, we'd be happy to work with them on that. But we do anticipate that supply line actually increasing quite significantly through the end of the year.
Just out of curiosity, Bill McNeely of Acrylic Design gave our fire department 1,000 of those face shields? Have we used a lot of those?
Mayor, yes. Mayor, members of the council, I can't recall the exact number, but that sounds about right. And I believe we're going to be using them for elections, for our election judges as well, so.
So we haven't run out of those, we still have?
We have not run out, and we've had enough, so we didn't have to purchase any for the election judges.
Are these shields able to be sanitized and reused?
I don't know the answer to that. Our fire chief would know, and maybe Cindy had that conversation with him.
I would think everything's getting reused. I mean, PPE, these things are getting reused too, so I think that it would be probably from the, by the same person, I don't know that we'd share them bad enough, or just the judges, not people coming in to vote.
Okay.
I think the recommendation is that the PPE be cleaned regularly. So everything's reusable, but it has to have frequent cleaning.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so our next discussion is about County Road 11 pedestrian crossings. At the last workshop, we had brought this to you, and you had a few questions where you had wanted some more information before providing staff direction. One of those things was you wanted to know how the locations of the crossings were selected and what level of feasibility work had been done. No feasibility studies have been completed related to either one of the proposed crossings. With regard to the crossing at Deer Run, it's staff's understanding that prior to the roadwork on County Road 11, a painted crosswalk was located at Deer Run, and the county did not repaint the sidewalk due to safety concerns. Previous council consensus was to relocate a crossing in the same location. The location at the St. Victoria Church was selected due to the number of church attendees parking across from the street of the church. Because of the intersection at County Road 11, 18 and 43 is adding a safe crossing, council wanted to revisit the church crossing to determine if it's necessary. So as discussed at the previous budget workshop, Cover Counties recently updated their cost share policy, which includes cost share criteria for these types of projects, and the county engineer has signaled that the pedestrian crossings would likely result in a 50/50 cost share, but the city would need to enter into a GPA with the county, so the county can officially look at whether the crossing meets the county's warrants to trigger the cost share. So assuming that there's a 50/50 cost share, the city would adjust the CIP to reflect the city's cost share of 258,400. Currently, we had in there 588,400, which was for the full amount. Given this time of year, it would probably be not possible to start construction, so staff would recommend entering into the GPA, so we know whether the project meets the cost share criteria, and if so, moving forward with the design this year, and then recommend carrying those funds for construction into the 2021 budget.
Counsel?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
The $500,000 price tag, is that for both crossings? And does that include the, you know, those lights and all of those kinds of things? It's got to be more than just paint.
That's correct. It includes, for the crossing at Deer Run, it includes reconstruction of County Road 11 to include a median. It's at 45 miles an hour, it's not, under the county's pedestrian process that they've put in place right now, it wouldn't be safe to just have a painted crosswalk there. So that includes rebuilding County Road 11 to add a median, and then overhead push-button deals. And then at 11, the overhead push-button system, but no reconstruction of the road, that would just be added. So that cost was prepared actually by the county, had Bolden Mink prepare a preliminary estimate a couple of years ago to submit for a grant application that wasn't successful. So that, that number is based on some work that had been done a couple of years ago. But with the county's policy that's in place right now, we would need to submit a formal request that we would like to have those two specific intersections evaluated, and they would order pedestrian counts. They have a flow chart that they go through associated with that, and that would be the first step they would do if we submit that formal request to them.
Do they just evaluate those two specific spots that we asked for? Or do they look along the corridor and say, it might be better if you moved it this way a block?
So we did do some of that analysis before they did that grant application. The mayor and I had an opportunity to spend a couple hours, I think it was, with Dan McCormick, their transportation manager, looking at the whole corridor. And he, he was of the opinion that these two locations had the greatest potential for meeting the criteria and the policy for pedestrian crossing. And part of the reason why they have that is so that you aren't just randomly painting crosswalks at every single cross street on the highway. So from a preliminary scan that Dan had done a few years ago, these made sense to him from his perspective as the county's transportation manager.
Thank you. I think, given that information, I'd be comfortable saying, let's get a joint hours agreement going.
Judy?
Yes, well, I absolutely, I've been working on this ever since I've been voted in to council, so I'm, I'm ready for them to, to move forward. And the fact that they are willing to split the cost now, instead of saying that we are responsible for the whole thing, is, is my, my big green light. Yeah.
Thank you, Tom G.
Yeah, again, I would be very much in favor of the Deer Run crossing. I think that's, it's going to be very money well-spent, it's a dangerous crossing. Given the fact that we do have another, we have a stoplight at 1843, got a safe crossing there, we do have a safe crossing at Highway 5. And given the fact that speeds are much lower by the, by the church or north of the church, I, I think that that's money that doesn't need to be spent at the church crossing. I just think that, that speeds are lower, you've got good visibility going north and south, and it is primarily just for, for churchgoers. Other than that, there's, there's, there's safe crossings at those other locations. And I, I mean, this is, this is not cheap, this is still a lot of money. We're, how much for, for each one? Pardon?
It's 588 for both. The majority of that is the Deer Run crossing. The County Road 11 number, I could look it up here, I don't remember.
Yeah, it was.
70 is what's in my head, but.
So we should be talking victorious portion. Well, 588, that's not victorious portion, that's a total. Victorious portion's half, so let's get the numbers straight here. We're talking half.
Well, at this point in time, though, we don't know that the, we meet the warrants to cost share.
Yeah, we just have to ask.
Well, we've had a lot of discussions with the county in the past four years, and I think they're serious about helping us. I don't think they'd lead us down this road, and there's been many discussions with the county. So this is not new.
Yeah, I mean, I saw paperwork from 2017.
Right. I've been talking about the Deer Run crossing since I was elected, and, or before I was elected, when I was appointed. So this is old subject, and we've been working on this, and frankly, it pains me to see that it's going to take a couple of years before this happens. I mean, I'd like to see this happen quick, because we've been working on it for so long.
Right.
And, you know.
Again, I agree, the Deer Run crossing is very much needed and anxious to move forward with that. We need to look, we need to look at our budget and try to save wherever we can. And I think it's, I think putting a crossing north of the church is redundant. I don't, I think people are going to say, what is Victoria doing? We've got, you've got flashing lights at, at 82nd Street, and then at 18, and now you want more flashing lights north of the church, and then you've got a stoplight at Highway 5, I think it's, I think it's overkill. We need to, we need to be budget-conscious here. We've got, we've got a sidewalk at Green Crest, we don't know how to pay for it, that is a much bigger safety concern for me personally than this crossing at the church.
Mr. Vogt, anything, Dad?
I'd say, I'm going to jump into the camp of Mr. Gregory. The Green Crest thing troubles me a lot, and if it comes pushed to shove, I would, I would vote to do the Green Crest and postpone indefinitely the one by the church. I think Deer Run is, is a deadly place to walk across, quite frankly, and we have to, have to do that. And the church is not, I don't think is, for different reasons, somebody mentioned the speed is lower, it is. It's 30 miles an hour, when this started, it was 45. So that's.
And that may have changed since when they first started, and, you know, before 2017. So I'm, I'm not that concerned either with, over at the church, because of, I did see that they have markings across there. But I am, I am concerned about the Deer Run, and I am concerned about the sidewalk too. So I would be fine with that. I just need that Deer Run, because all the people from Lake Town are trying to figure out a way to cross the road so that they can get over to the trail.
Yeah, it's.
So I have just two things to add. Those numbers that we have for that price are a number of years old, so we don't know. They're probably higher now, probably not significantly, but it could be maybe 100 grand higher. Secondly, I, I agree with Mr. Gregory here. The, we don't know until they do the warrants whether or not the church crossing's even going to qualify. I'm, I think Councilmember Gregory's right, I bet you that's not going to qualify, and so this is kind of a moot discussion. But if it does qualify and we have to set priorities, I would pick Green Crest over this one, because of the fact that Green Crest is walking right onto County Road 43, and there's, there's no question there. At least, there is some safety at, at church. So I support getting the GPA so that we can get the study done and find out whether or not the church is even in, if you will, in the game in the sense that it qualifies. I don't think there's any doubt that the Deer Run will qualify based on traffic. Real quick, the, Karen, do you know, they've done the construction at 1811 and, and 43, are the signals going to be put up yet next, or what's the story there?
They'll be put up yet this year, but there's a longer lead time on the signal poles to actually arrive, so I haven't heard an update of when the poles are actually going to be delivered, but they're getting all the electrical in place and everything done so that when the poles arrive, they can put them up. So that's still this year.
We're seeing the final look and feel, other than the fact that the lights aren't in?
Correct.
Okay, got it. All right, so back on, back on point here. So I think I heard a consensus from the council to go ahead and proceed with the JPA. Counsel, without objection?
Should we direct step just the 82nd Street, or do you want to include both?
Deer Run?
Is that, is that expensive?
86.
86, right. Is that expensive to do the study at the church?
No, they'll, they'll, we just have to ask them, and they'll do the counts. So we, you know, it might be helpful for the council to see what the going through the flow chart looks like at the church, because, you know, that's an area that we've gotten requests from residents before, and if it doesn't meet the criteria, it doesn't. If it does, then you could budget for it in a future year. It's a standalone, there's no benefit in the two projects happening together.
So at this point, we're not spending any money, we're just saying, take a look at it?
Yep.
Very good.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, it sounds like we have a consensus. Next?
So this is the long-term street maintenance fund, and the reason I include this slide is, this is where that funding would come from for the, for the crosswalk. So this is just showing that we do have the fund balance accounted for in this fund. The next topic is the Green Crest sidewalk.
That sounds familiar, we were talking about that.
Right. So the question to council is, does council wish to pursue construction of the sidewalk from Green Crest to County Road 11 as part of the 2021 budget? Now, some of the funding options that Dana and I have been discussing is, we could delay Bavaria Trail to 2022 and use trail fund balance, or we could not use trail fund and increase the levy, which would have a 1.86% levy increase, based on a price of 110,000 at this point is what we're estimating. Or you could construct both Bavaria and Green Crest from fund balance and the levy, and that would require a 5.08% increase in the levy. This is the trail gap fund that I'm referring to. So the planned transfer to, for 2021 is 250,000. So Bavaria Trail, option A, if that comes in at 1.1 million, that would give us a $200,000 deficit in the fund balance with doing the Green Crest at 110,000. So that's where that 5.08% levy increase would come into play to bring that fund balance up to zero.
Good question. The empty lots that we have for sale, what are we planning to do with that money?
Marty, would you like to answer that?
I think that is up to the council's prerogative. I think we had planned to bring that back for discussion as to how we want to handle any revenues related to those sales of those lots. I think that the Smithtown lot, the one that, as you'll recall, if is sold, would need to be a portion of park property. The Parks and Recreation Department had requested that the funds from that sale be dedicated to the Park and Trail Fund. And the question was with the Maple Drive property, that was the former Land Trust lot, as to whether or not that funding should be used for some sort of affordable housing initiative or not. Again, none of those things have been decided yet by the council, so it would be the council's prerogative on all three of those.
With, with getting proceeds, have we talked?
So we are, we just concluded our RFP search that ended last week. We've met with a couple of Realtor brokers. Our intention is that if we are able to get a contract in place yet this week, we would bring that contract to the council for the first August meeting. So once we have that person in place, we would then really hit the ground running on trying to determine valuation for those lots, potential if there's any expense on the front end that would need to be considered, or if prices would need to be adjusted accordingly for any, any expenses that would need to make those lots buildable. But we should have a better sense of that as soon as we get our Realtor broker on board. And as I mentioned, we're hoping to bring that contract to the council next week.
But we're not going to come up with zero, we're going to come up with something. What's, are we going to have 100,000, 50,000?
So, so from, from preliminary discussions with these folks? So from preliminary discussions with these folks, they've said that vacant lots in Victoria, anywhere from 80 to 150,000 plus. Again, that's without looking at the specific conditions of these lots and what additional expenses a builder or a buyer might have to put into them.
So you could easily come up with 100,000. So it's not, it's not a discussion we should avoid because realistically, you're going to come up with 100 grand.
Right, it really should.
At least, maybe more. So there's an answer to Green Crest?
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
There's other answers, too, by the way, I think.
Mayor, members of the council, I would just add that you have not, you'd have to actually sell the lots before you actually get the revenue. So I think that goes without saying, but I just want to make it clear for the public who may be watching us tonight, we have not sold those lots. So we don't have the revenue in hand. But you're absolutely right. It could be a revenue source for this type of project.
Not until the check's clear.
Right. All I'm saying is that could be a revenue source rather than levy.
We use fund accounting, so I mean, cash flow is not a problem usually as long as we get the revenue and we have a high assurance that we will come up with something.
So we're working on setting max tax here. So we can always go down, but we can't go up.
Right.
So if we say Green Crest is a priority for us and we do want to fund it, so we can ask them to include that in the max tax. And then if we realize the revenue from these sales, then we can certainly back that back down by December.
Yes.
Our Trail Gap Fund is needed not only for Green Crest but elsewhere. And we set a priority as a building, closing one trail gap. We're looking at Bavaria. And Bavaria is going to be an expensive project, and we're not quite sure we have funds for that. So there's going to be no shortage of needs.
Right.
Right.
For dollars. And, you know, certainly looking at these vacant lots as a revenue sources is reasonable, but we have a lot of needs and no shortage.
I have a question. I view the Green Crest Sidewalk as under the same idea as a trail. And.
Bingo.
I've heard a little bit of conflict about that, that a sidewalk isn't the same as a trail and could we use trail funds? Obviously, we can use the trail funds at our discretion. But I view this as a, I view this as a trail, a connector.
Yeah, whether it's asphalt or a cement sidewalk, it connects the people, gets them off the road and gets them into the sidewalks. So, or gets them into a trail. So I would agree with you, right? I don't want to get hung up on terminology.
But I, but my point is, is that there was some concern about can we use trail funding for this sidewalk?
Yeah, I've had pushback on that as well.
Is there any restriction?
No, we could.
It's up to the council to decide. So yes, I think.
I have the opposite opinion. I believe this Green Crest thing is a travesty in the way we design the city and it has nothing to do with trails. There should never have been 30 townhouses down there with no way to get out of there. And it's a safety thing and it is a sidewalk. And it's just like the sidewalks that go by the cemetery in the church. I mean, the trail fund is seriously underfunded. So, you know, I think it's imperative that we find a way to fund that sidewalk somewhere else because there is a serious problem with the trail fund. And, you know.
I thought we just talked about that, that we would end up using the, assuming we sell those properties.
I think we should even look further because just to say that there's a problem with the selling of the lots. I mean, this city has unassigned fund balances of over $1 million and assigned fund balances of $4 million. There's all kinds of places where we've assigned fund balances that God knows will ever spend the money. And we should be looking at that.
I would second that. If we have money sitting around that we should be thinking about using, this is an urgent need. And if we've got money sitting somewhere that we're not going to use for 10 years, I.
Okay, so we have to keep that 30% in there.
Right, I understand. I would agree, but there's, to the number of votes, point, there's more money sitting around.
I'm familiar with certain schedules in the balance sheet that show different assigned amounts that were set up years back that are basically conservative measures today. We say that'd be nice to have that in case this happens. Like we have $60,000 tucked away if somebody files another lawsuit on open meeting law.
Or just a lawsuit.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Next week.
He's going to be too busy. So, you know, it's things like that. This city is big enough where if we have an urgent need, we can find $100,000.
Yeah, I agree.
The fact that we're arguing about this like this is really kind of sick.
I don't think we're arguing about it. Deb, I think the point you were trying to make, at least what I interpreted when you talked about the Green Crest, was the fact that we're connecting them into the trail system and that would meet the priority of we wanted to get one done. Is, am I interpreting that wrong? Is that not what you meant?
I would agree with that statement. I don't know if that's what I originally meant, but yeah, I would agree with that statement.
All right, so that's how I interpreted it.
I think it's an absolutely worthy cause, but given the fact that the trail fund is underfunded and we do have other money, I think we can find this money. And I would opt to say, let's fund it in our 2021 budget. If we think we have to increase the levy, I think it's worthwhile to do that. But I believe we can find the money somewhere else without increasing the levy and without draining the trail fund.
All right, just, I want to make sure, Claire, you're talking about Green Crest or you're talking about Green Crest and the Bavaria Trail both?
I'm talking about Green Crest. I think that's a separate conversation about Bavaria.
All right, perfect. So, yeah, I think we're on the same page. And I think we don't have to take any money out of any of the funds. I think it's reasonable to expect that we'll be able to sell one or more properties and get the bulk, if not all of the cash needed. And we can meet our priority, at least our desired priority, of connecting or fixing one trail gap, whether we call it a trail or a sidewalk. It connects them into the system, so to speak. So I think we have a consensus to go forward. We're going to do Green Crest. How we fund it, we'll know more when we get the Realtor to tell us and we'll see if the properties move or not. And even if they don't, worst case scenario, there's money available in other places that we could tap into if need be. Counsel, is that? Okay. Very quickly, are we going to get into the design of Green Crest and talk about that again at a later date? Or is that something we should briefly touch on here?
Given the discussion here, Mayor and members of the City Council, I think it would be in our best interest to get going on the design work before it snows so that we could get bids in the winter and construct it in the spring since it seems like there's consensus to move forward for that. So we could bring back a future council item to authorize design where we could talk about it in more detail then.
All right, so unless counsel objects, one of the things I would like to add to look at this, at least preliminarily, some of the residents I've spoken to, they were asking if the council considered going off the backside of Green Crest over through where the old water tower used to be and connect into the trail system there instead of coming up 43.
So we looked at that and it had a similar cost, but has the implication of having to acquire property from the golf course. So we had our neighborhood meeting with the residents last Tuesday. And I don't, it seemed like they both used either route today to try to find the safer route. But I think there's a little bit more room to fit it along County Road 43 than in the front yards of the people on County Road 11. But we'll certainly take a closer look at that when we would get into design work.
All right, super. That's all I wanted to bring up. Counsel, anything else to add on this? Okay, next item.
So I was just going to ask, and Kara, do you have anything else to add about the resident meeting? Any update that you had with Green Crest?
Sure. It was a very well-attended meeting and it was very fun. It was a virtual meeting and it was very enjoyable getting all, you know, it was very well-attended and getting the neighborhood all connected to the technology and participating. But it is my understanding that they have provided written comments to the City Council that I think you all have a copy of, that I do know they asked to be read into the record, I think, tonight under open forum.
She's actually going to come.
Oh, she's coming, yeah. Yeah, they opted to combine their feedback into one deal so you didn't get 40-some emails, which seemed thoughtful.
And there was a letter that was sent to all of us also from a resident, the resident that's on 11, that was asking that we did do the sidewalk on 43 because he's done boulders and sound barriers and he would really be taking, he wouldn't be able to park his RV. I mean, it would really cause a huge problem for him if you tried to do behind the golf course and across 11.
Yeah, I would note that we did invite all four property owners who are on 43 or 11 that would be affected by this installation. And I think only one was in attendance. From previous conversations, I do know that there was not a lot of excitement of having this installed adjacent to their property. So that, you know, may, once we start getting into design, we'll likely hear more from those folks. But in the County Road 43 situation, we are able to do the work within the existing road right away. So.
All right, so no acquisition then?
No.
Got it. That pretty much decides that, I think. Counsel, any other comments? Trish, go ahead.
Okay, so just one last piece to the Trail Gap Fund. And I don't know that you necessarily want to make a decision on this tonight, but to take into your consideration about the Bavaria Trail. And given that there was a grant awarded for $150,000, that if we did push that trail off to 2022, that we would need to reapply for that grant. So just to keep that in mind.
So we would have to do the trail next year or we would lose the grant?
Who's the grant from?
Mr. Mayor, the DNR.
We have to make a decision tonight?
No.
No. We have to look at. I mean, there's two actions here and I think they're both higher than what we thought.
Exactly. Dana, is this coming up in a future council meeting?
So Mayor, members of the council, generally in the fall. So at our November meeting is where you take your deeper dive into these funds. So this would come back certainly at that meeting. Or we can bring it back as a separate discussion item if the council would like to take a real deep dive specifically into Bavaria.
Counsel, your thoughts? I'd like to take a deeper dive on this. The, I want to look at these costs a lot more. We can't, we can't just spend, spend, spend.
I agree.
So.
Agreed.
All right, so can we get this on the schedule for a deeper dive, please? All right. Go ahead.
So this is the conclusion. Just asking for if there's any other items you want to consider for future meetings. We listed Bavaria Trail to be one of those items. If there's anything else, do you have any direction to add or cut services, increase or reduce the levy or the tax rate? Right now, we're proposing a 7.62% increase on the levy, which will increase the tax rate 1.64%.
And again, this is max tax, though, right?
Yeah, for max tax. Are there any other revenue sources that you want to consider? Any other information that you might have or ideas that you might have for us to look into?
Got it. Counsel?
I'd say you should be conservative with our initial rate.
This is much higher than last year.
So last year, our levy was higher. Our levy percentage was higher, but our tax rate was able to stay flat. And the reason for that was because we had a higher market value. So we didn't see that increase this year that we had prior. So that's why you're going to see that increase in the tax rate.
So what is that increase in tax rate worth? You said it's 1.6? What are the dollars?
So the dollars on a medium-value home would be.
But overall, for the budget itself, 1.6%.
Oh, how much is that?
Yes.
So right now, it would be at 30, well, it was 32.04 last year. It would be 33.68 this year, which is an increase of $79 on a medium-value home.
So is that, what, 100,000?
Overall, for the budget, are we looking at as an extra, it's 100,000 increase in the budget?
So it's like 50,000 for every half a percent. So about 100,000, about 140,000.
If we wanted to hold it flat, we'd have to.
If we want to, okay, so if we want a flat tax rate, for a flat tax rate, we would need about 300,000. For a flat levy, we would need about 420,000.
All right, this is where I think we need a deeper dive on some of those funds and that cash sitting there and decide whether or not that's appropriate to use some of that or cut back on some of the spending.
But the tax rate increase of 1.64%, so the tax rate you're talking about is our tax capacity rate.
Right.
Not the tax rate, tax capacity rate, which is 30-some percent. And basically, the true tax rate to each homeowner is like 3/10 of 1%.
Right, because it's.
So you're talking about a 7.62% increase on 3/10 of 1%?
Yeah.
Okay, so. You know, this is.
I know, it's a little deceiving when you say 33.68%. That's not on your total home value. That's, it's like divided by 1,000.
Capacity value, which the city never approaches.
Right.
Which is 1%. So this is 33.8% of 1%.
Of 1%, which it means it's fly poop on pepper in many respects.
One of the things that I think would be helpful is the other taxing authorities and what they're looking at as far as increasing taxes. I mean, we work here in, under the City of Victoria, kind of in a bubble. But we certainly know that there are school districts that impact taxes. The county impacts taxes, some of those other things. It would be helpful for us to know that.
And the county will provide that information once max tax gets set.
All right, Counsel, any further comments? Okay, if not, can I get a motion to adjourn the workshop, please?
Motion.
Go ahead. I make a motion to adjourn the workshop.
Thank you. There's the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.